There's a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted on the west wall of the meeting room and is accessible to the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item on the consent agenda, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having a bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on March 6, 2017, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $268,390.39. Item F, approval of Boswa report of claims in the amount of $56,631.21. Item G, approval of special designated liquor application of St. Joseph Catholic Church for a special event to be held on April 23, 2017, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at 612 High Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item H, approval of special designated license application of Main Street Beatrice Incorporated for a special event to be held on April 21, 2017, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. at Court Street Plaza, 601 Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item I, approval of special designated license application of the American Legion Norman Bidding Post Number 27 for a special event to be held on May 20, 2017, and May 21, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to midnight at 701 Dorsey Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item J, resolution number 6027 prohibiting parking along North 25th Street, beginning at a point 249 feet north of the intersection of North 25th Street and Elk Street along the east side of North 25th Street for a distance of 100 feet north. And item K, resolution number 6028 granting Brian Noble and his designees permission to sell or offer for sale or peddle goods, wares, or merchandise upon city property located at 5th and Court Street and Market Street as part of the annual Blue River Jam on August 19, 2017. Any item that a member of the city council wants removed from the consent agenda? Phil?
I need to abstain on G.
On item G, alright. Anyone else from the council? Anyone from the public? Mr. Callen?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Callen, second by Morgan, that all items under the consent agenda be approved. Your vote please. And that is approved 7-0. I'm sorry, that's approved 7-0. We're going to skip around on the agenda just a little bit. We have a representative from... Is that what I heard? Thank you. Presentation of the auditor's report and comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending September 30, 2016, and with BK D is Chris Linder. Chris, good evening.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, thank you. To just touch a little bit on the audit report that you have in front of you and also the communication letter, a brief summary of those items and a few other highlights from the financial activities. But first, I want to give a big thank you to Linda and her team there at City Hall in terms of helping us out throughout the audit process and putting together the...so the document you have in front of you is a lengthy, comprehensive document that there's a lot of time and effort put into that, and that's a lot of time and effort on Linda's part in terms of putting that together so that we can come out and do the audit. So again, a thank you to her efforts in putting that together and then putting up with us throughout that process as well. So I appreciate all of that. To talk a little bit about just, again, maybe a little bit of what we're looking at and in terms of what, you know, what are you really doing as part of the city audit, a couple of things to note. In addition to the financial statements that you have in front of you, we also prepare, perform a separate audit of the financial statements of the Board of Public Works and a separate deliverable to them and came down and met with their board last Wednesday at their meeting. And then in addition to that, also a separate audit financial statement is prepared and provided to the board, excuse me, the Beatrice Airport Authority Board as part of their financial statements as well. So with that, it's kind of a coordination of those audits and making sure that all of that information is included within these financial statements, but separate deliverables are provided for those boards. And then in addition to the financial statements themselves, there's two other opinions that you'd see within this complete comprehensive report. One of those is an opinion in accordance with government auditing standards. And so what that requires, being a municipality within the state of Nebraska, the city is required to have an audit performed in accordance with government auditing standards. And from an auditor's standpoint, what we're doing then is not coming out and testing the effectiveness internal control and not looking, you know, essentially searching for noncompliance in those items, but as part of our testing of the financial statements, if we were to discover something that was considered to be noncompliant with, if it was a state statute or with a federal statute, that would be reported under those standards. We would have to report that in that opinion. So, you know, happy to report there was none of those items, but that is something separate than just the financial statements themselves. And then the second piece is also an opinion for compliance with federal awards. And because the city does receive, you know, several federal grants, and depending on the level of those expenditures each year, you may or may not be required to have this separate single audit performed, you know, primarily because of some of the dollars spent out at the airport. It puts you over the threshold to have to require that separate single audit, so we did that as well. And then that's looking for compliance with the terms of those grants. And so with that, again, we had no material noncompliance discovered as part of that, so a clean, single audit opinion as well. So the document, the large document that you've had in front of you that I know you maybe just received, so we'll all get that read tonight, I'm pretty sure. It's a comprehensive report, and so then, you know, as part of this, we'll cover some things in there, but then the city will present this to the Government Finance Officers Association that kind of does another review as well. And then as part of that, we'll issue a certification to the city saying that it is, in a sense, compliance with their reporting standards. A couple of things, highlights to note there. On page one of the CAFER, I'll call it that, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFER, is our auditor's opinion. And so that is a clean, unmodified opinion. So the financial statements are in accordance with GAAP for a governmental entity, so the numbers that you see in there are, from our standpoint, materially accurate. And then those other opinions that I mentioned are farther back in the report, on page 161 and 163, if you wanted to flip to those later on. A part of the document that, again, and I understand it's a pretty lengthy document and sometimes maybe a little intimidating, but if there's just a section of that, if you could spend 10 to 15 minutes with to get a good, high-level overview of the city's financials as of year-end, September 30, and then before the year ended, is the management's discussion and analysis starting on page four. And that's, again, the separate section of the report that is entirely, you know, prepared, completed by Linda, and gives a little more layman's read of the financials, you know, saying what are the activities that happened during the year. It has, you know, the balances for both 2016 and 2015, so you're able to maybe see the changes from year to year, and then a little bit of narrative telling you what may have changed during the year and why that happened. You know, then the fund, I guess, that is always, from a governance standpoint, important is the general fund, and that fund's specific financial statements start on page 16. And so the general fund is the city's primary operating fund, so the one that pays for your general governmental type expenditures and is tax-supported primarily. So that, looking at that fund, you can see its position at year-end, what are our assets and liabilities, and then also, looking in several pages after that, looking at the activity, your revenues and expenditures for the year. And then the other part of the document that sometimes for someone that may not be as familiar with the whole governmental financial reporting model itself, a good section to kind of maybe get a feel for how the city's doing and looking at some of the trending is the statistical section, starting on page 137. And several different tables as part of that, part of this section, but it does get into a little more at the end of that, some demographic and economic indicators, looking at, you know, population, looking at debt to population, but then also for a lot of things, looking at trends. So you can see, okay, for a lot of things, over the last 10 years, how are we moving? From debt levels, from revenues, expenses, from fund balance, and you can kind of see if you've got some ups and downs, maybe what caused those. But again, from not having to dig through all of the financial statements and all the footnotes, maybe a few highlights that if you were to be able to spend a few minutes with the report, some things you may want to look at. For the 2016 audit, maybe just a couple items to touch on that were a little unique this year. The first three were kind of newer items. We had a new accounting standard that modified maybe just a few disclosures within the footnotes of the report, and that related to fair values. And so with, really with the city, the only thing at fair values is a few investments, so the disclosures were tweaked a little bit for that. Two bond issuances that happened during the year, that to ensure that that activity gets reported correctly and that those balances, the ending balances are in as well. And then the second one, or the second issuance is that refunding bonds. And so there's a calculation we have to evaluate to make sure that, from that standpoint, is there a significant deferred gain or loss as part of the transaction. So that item was not a material gain or loss from a book standpoint as part of that refunding. And then something that's not new, but just to mention it, the Library Foundation is included in the city's financial statements as a component unit, just based on the relationship of the foundation to the city and the support the foundation provides. And then with the audit standards being that as well, that the foundation is audited by a separate CPA firm. And so there's some coordination and some communication that we have to have with that separate firm to ensure that we're comfortable with those balances, bringing them into this report, to provide our opinion over top of those.
Go back. So the Boswa thing. Go back.
Yes.
The issuance of the Boswa, so that's a...Boswa's a separate entity, and so the bonds that are controlled, but we have members of the county board, it's a joint thing. So is it tied, so would that be part of their responsibilities as well? I mean, when they have, the county has their audit, will that be tied or is that separate to this?
The Boswa for the city is similar to the Library Foundation because of the relationship from a governance and then also from a financial standpoint, it is included as a component unit of the city's financials. So from what you see in these financials, it's really, it's kind of shown as a fund of the city.
Yeah.
And based on that relationship, then it's within the cities, and if I believe right, that would not be shown separately as part of the, or not separately, but not shown as part of the county like the city does.
Okay. I answered it.
Good, good.
Yep.
Go ahead, Chris.
The other document that you have is just a short letter in front of you, our audit communication letter, maybe sometimes you've heard it referred to as a management letter. And there are certain required communications that we are to have with governance, with you folks. And so the letter really covers those, and we like to have it in a formal letter that you can have in front of you. And maybe just to touch on a few things within there. One item on page two of that letter is looking at what are considered maybe some of the significant estimates as part of the city's financials, and in one point to make you aware of those, because these are items within the financials that aren't sort of black and white. You can't go to a bank statement, an investment statement, or invoice at year-end and say, "Okay, this is exactly what our balance in the financials needs to be." There's some estimation, there's some subjectiveness to determine what that is. And so a couple of those items, just to touch on very briefly, the allowance for uncollectible accounts. So if you have accounts receivable and, you know, other types of receivables in your financials, it's not likely you're always going to collect all of those because of, you know, delinquencies or bankruptcies. So determining what portion of that receivable may not be collectible. You know, the city's had a positive collection history, so luckily that balance is not significant. Depreciation is always a significant estimate. You know, with any municipality, you make a significant amount of capital expenditures, and, you know, you capitalize those, put those on your financial statements, but you have to depreciate those. And you really say, "Well, what's the life of that? How long is that asset going to last us?" Well, that's an estimate. So something that that has to be determined on day one, but could last you 30, 40 years. One for a lot of cities is the claims incurred, so kind of the self-insurance claims. So there may be claims that occurred during the fiscal year that aren't going to get paid out for several months after year-end, so you have to make an estimate of what that liability might be at year-end. And a lot of that's based on historical trends and patterns. The landfill closure cost obviously is a significant estimate in relation to Boswa because of the, you know, the future costs that will be incurred as part of that and determining, you know, what are those costs in the future, you know, applying a present value factor to bring that back to kind of to those dollars and recording that liability in the financials. And then, you know, strictly as it relates to the Board of Public Works, the unbilled revenues piece, we talked a little bit about at their meeting on Wednesday, this, and that's, there is a lot of, you know, usage, customer usage through year-end that doesn't actually get billed and shown in the receivable system until, you know, later on into October, but you still want to accrue those revenues into the fiscal year and record a receivable for that. But again, there's some estimation in determining what that is.
So Chris, on those five bullet points, is our estimation process reasonable in your opinion?
Yes, and that's obviously, from an audit standpoint, we design our audit testing to look at, you know, what are the areas of higher risk? And if something has more risk to it, we need to apply more testing, we need to spend more time in those areas. So from a risk standpoint, estimates always pose more risk because there's subjectiveness. Where cash and investments, we can go to a confirm or a bank statement and tell you, "Well, that's what the balance needs to be." So yes, we challenge those, test those, look at historical patterns, and the balance is recorded for those we feel are reasonable. Yes. The disclosures, really the only one to maybe note is that second bullet point there, the commitment and contingencies. So any, anything of that nature that a lot of times isn't stuff that's recorded in the financials, but represents a commitment or a future obligation to the city, and really the big one this year, that's not new, but there has been some activity to it in the past few months, is in relation to the gas cleanup. And there's a little bit of discussion of the handling of that within the footnotes for that item. Something then on the bottom of page two, any audit adjustments? If we're to come in as part of our audit process and have changes to the financials and anything that, if you look at it and say, "Well, had we not come in and performed our audit, would have that been identified?" And so there was nothing from that standpoint in terms of an audit adjustment. So again, a kudos to Linda and her team in getting everything ready for us and having it in order so that we did not have to make adjustments to the financial statements. Something that's not in the letter that I'll mention is internal control matters. And so as part of our audit process, we have to look at, you know, we'll look at segregation of duties and our, the proper reviews and approvals being applied within those significant cycles, so your cash outflows, your inflows, payroll, you know, investing, finance, and looking at that. Then also testing some of those controls to make sure if reconciliations are supposed to be getting done every week or every month, is that happening? And so we test those controls, we look at that structure, and again, we didn't have anything that we felt rose to the level of a deficiency or a reportable item to you. So we feel that the controls that are in place are operating as designed at the city. And then the last section of the letter just looks at maybe some considerations and best practices. You know, as part of a process, a lot of times we may make some verbal recommendations to Linda and the team and just, you know, look at, maybe consider doing things a little different way, and we'll do that throughout. A couple that we've listed in the letter there that you'll see. And then looking at the new standards, there's, the standard-setting bodies are always busy, and so there's plenty for us to keep busy on here in the next few years, as you'll see. There's really only one next year for the city that'll impact them, and that's a disclosure item related to what they consider tax abatements. So if you look at things like your TIF agreements are considered a tax abatement, depending on how that agreement's written up, and this applies to a lot of cities within the state of Nebraska, obviously, but the standards look at those types of items and say, "Well, we want you to boost what maybe you've been disclosing about them and include a little bit more information to help the reader understand how much tax revenue is the city foregoing as part of those agreements." So that's something we'll have to look at for the fiscal year 2017. I've got a few more slides. Any questions at this point on the report itself or the letter?
Any questions?
The TIF, reporting next year on the TIF, since we all have to work on a percentage of income and debt held, will that make a difference to that for next year?
Can you clarify, I guess, what you mean?
So we have, we have certain percentages of our reserve funds that are in need for a day-to-day basis, and guess what? We owe on our debt. So will that make, does the TIF money that we have outstanding, does that go in the debt category or does that go in the revenue category?
If, in terms of the TIS, I guess, it's really more, I don't think, if I'm understanding your question right, I'm not sure it would apply to either of those. Because really, this is just saying, "Well, we have, you know, so many property tax revenues that could have been brought into the city."
It doesn't...
They went back towards that project, so they didn't actually become revenue of the city.
It doesn't change any percentages.
It should not, no.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
That's what I should have asked.
Okay.
Because that's what I've been...
Yep, yep. So and again, within the city, there's, you know, those numbers aren't as significant as some others you may see, but the entire intent of that is, if you have a city with a long laundry list of TIF projects out there, they just want the reader to know how much property tax revenue, you know, could have we earned had those not been in place. But it came with a lot of controversy, obviously, because a lot of, a lot of people argue, "Well, had we not allowed that project to happen through TIF, then it may not be here at all." So it's come with some controversy, obviously, but it's something that's moved forward. It will be required disclosure. A couple, again, just pulling some things out and from a high-level financial analysis of the city, looking at some trending, you know, this is kind of pulling some valuation numbers from going back from 13 to 16, and you've seen a nice growth in some of the valuation. From 13 to 14, you see a little bump there, and that, there's some annexations there that happened in between 13 and 14, which caused that valuation to go up a little bit there. And then speaking of kind of the TIF, projects two through four kind of rolled back onto the tax rolls then at that point from 15 to 16, so that helped, helped that valuation for what the city would collect from a property tax standpoint during those years. So kind of then looking at that compared to, okay, from the tax levy, so what did the city really realize from a property tax standpoint in those years? Obviously, you'll see from 13 to 14 that, because of those annexations, you know, having some of that in, from 14 to 15, a slight levy increase that caused some of that, and then 15 to 16, the levy really stayed, but then the valuation caused that to go up. So you've kind of seen between the two, obviously, some upward trending, which is good. But again, being able to, with some of the other things happening with the valuations, being able to keep that mill levy fairly consistent. One other thing that we'll look at and when we look and say, "Okay, well, what's a good benchmark to maybe compare, maybe yourself to other municipalities?" Something that we'll pull together and kind of looking at a peer group of similar cities in the area, you know, similar populations, and trying to look for, you know, similar activities to make sure if we've got a municipality that maybe has something special that's unique to just them, trying to keep that out so that it's not skewing the numbers one way or the other. But looking at the governmental debt, the principal outstanding compared to that assessed valuation, and so this, and this is just the governmental debt, so it's not any utility debt, enterprise debt, because that debt is normally supported by the revenues from that. So if you have an electric revenue bond, it's supported by your electric revenues, where this is really supported by the tax of the municipality. So looking at the city Beatrice compared to that peer group of about six or seven cities, you know, significantly favorable from that category of how much debt you have outstanding as compared to your valuation compared to that peer group. And then this is looking at, that on the left is that same figure, the governmental debt to your population, and then the one on the right then is pulling in, you guys do have some, you know, some enterprise and utility debt, but even with that, from yourselves to the peer group, in a more favorable position from a leverage standpoint there. And then the last one is one that the Government Finance Officers Association looks at and provides some benchmarks, but also from a rating agency standpoint, they look at this metric a lot as well, and looking at your, your general fund. So again, the primary operating fund of the city in saying of our fund balance, of our equity at year-end, what piece of that is considered, what they would say is unrestricted. So again, if we needed to use money to pay our operating expenditures, could we? And so of that, the general fund's fund balance at year-end is roughly about 3.1 million from that standpoint, and all of that is considered unrestricted at September 30, 2016. So they'll look at that balance and compare it to your annual operating expenditures. So anything that's other than debt service or capital outlay. And looking at that percentage, so they say a healthy level is roughly about two months of expenditures, so that if for some reason our tax revenues were to be cut off tomorrow, would we have, how much money would we have to be able to pay our bills for a certain amount of time? So they say two months is a healthy percentage. Right now, based on that percentage, you're sitting about 36% or four months. The one thing I'll caution you though in that number, within that 3.1, about 1.1 of that is been assigned within the city for future expenditures for some EMS equipment for the gas plant cleanup. And so also, I think there's some other projects in there that, even though it's unrestricted, that if it needed to be used for another purpose, it has kind of been, in a sense, committed internally to be used for some of those items. So within that, you know, that's, taking those out would maybe cut that down to about two and a half to three months versus four. But again, just a metric to look at to compare yourself of, well, what would the GFOA or what would others compare to say from a equity standpoint, what's a healthy percentage, looking at two months, and sitting at four is a good spot to be. And that's, that's all I have from there, so any questions for me?
Any questions? Chris, great report. Thank you very much. Also want to thank Linda and the administration for the preparatory work that they did in the advent of this internal audit. Hope that made your job a little easier.
Absolutely. We appreciate all the help, help they provide to us and things moving, so.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the time, guys. Take care.
Okay, we're going to start with item three, public hearing. A public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of Plan Modification S to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number five.
This redevelopment modification number S, if you will, is Birchwood Estates Retirement Village LLC. As some of you may recall, this is the retirement village of about 11th and Dorsey Street. And we talked about, planning and zoning has looked at this, they've approved it, the CRA has looked at this agreement, they have approved it. It conforms to our comp plan that's out there. Brian Millers is here to answer any questions, but this is about a 32-unit assisted living facility, about 30,000 square feet is what we're looking at. Today it's zoned R2/AG, it kind of straddles a couple different zoning areas, they'll have to be rezoned R4. Shouldn't be a problem, there's R4 immediately to the south of that location. TIF eligible expenses total about $1,55,402 worth. When he's all completed, we estimate the assessed value to be about $3.8 million. So that, that project is moving forward. I said Brian's here to answer any questions you may have, but this is Plan Modification S.
Any questions? We've talked about this, looked at this. Any information you need from Brian? Alright, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:28 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Callen, second by Billsbuck. The public hearing be closed at 7:28 p.m. Your vote please. And that is approved 7-0. Excuse me. Next items, public hearing to consider declaring an area to be substandard and blighted, and adoption of the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number eight.
Redevelopment area number eight is essentially the old hospital. It runs from about 8th Street to about 11th, Irving to Arthur. As all of you recall, that in order to have TIF financing, the first thing you have to do is have a blight and substandard study, and that's what we're talking about tonight. Then we'll approve that area, approve the study, approve the redevelopment area, and then that area will be eligible for TIF financing moving forward. If you look in your packet, I believe you'll see Hannah Kealan did the study, they found all the necessary requirements to determine the area as blight and substandard and to declare it as a redevelopment area.
Rich?
Two questions. They have to have the TIF funding before they can advance for the grant that they're looking for?
No.
Where are they sitting on the grant?
The grant application for, I believe you're talking about Excel Developments, grant application. It has currently been submitted. I believe they got the first round of comments back today, yesterday, sometime in the last couple days. They can add additional information to their grant application, they will know, I believe, by the end of April whether or not it's granted or not. But yes, one of the things they will need in order to move forward, the project, to make it viable, is TIF financing. It's not necessary for the grant, but it is necessary to make the project viable moving forward.
Second question, did they pay Hannah Kealan for the assessment or did we?
We have an agreement where that cost is being split between two parties, one of which is Excel Development.
And the other party is...
Not us.
Not us.
That's all I needed to know then. Thank you.
Any other questions? Questions from the public? Alright, Mr. Callen?
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:30 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Callen, second by Kerr. The public hearing be closed at 7:30 p.m. Your vote please, and that is approved 7-0. Next is a public hearing on the acqua... Next is a public hearing on the acquisition of real property described as follows. West of First Street, between the Big Blue River and First Street, between Ella Street and Grant Street, from D&amp;L Investments Company.
As it says in the announcement there, this is all the property is owned by D&amp;L Investments that is essentially down along the river. The picture in your packet is not 100% correct. There's additional parcel to the north that I know we've looked at a couple of times, but it didn't get circled in your map, but it does include all of that area. You'll notice that the purchase price is $30,000. We're set to close by April 3rd of this year, and we have had environmental studies done on it. It's what we figured would be down there, it's PCE, PCB, some metals, some waste oil, that kind of stuff, and we have received estimates of what it would take to clean up the property if we were ever required to do so by NDEQ.
Rich?
How much time did we give him to clean it up?
That is, the operator there is not party to this contract. The operator down there is Danny. The person you're buying it from is D&amp;L, which is Donnie.
I understand that.
We are, we'll discuss about that later on tonight.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public?
The map, Tobias, the map, and I don't have that. They're not contiguous, correct? The TPCs are property?
No. If in your packet, I believe there are three legal descriptions.
Yep.
Two of them are contiguous, which is essentially the big building that sits down there, it's all that ground, and then on the very far north end, where the railroad crosses the creek.
Right.
There's a parcel up there as well that's included.
Okay. I thought that was, I was, okay. Yep.
Okay. Mr. Catlin, I'm going to close the public hearing.
May I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:32 PM?
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the public hearing be closed at 7:32 PM. Your vote, please. And that is approved, six in favor, and Mr. Catlin abstains. Next item is a public hearing on the acquisition of real property described as follows. Lot 34, Gage County Industrial Park, second to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
This is a parcel of land that we sold to Russ Barron's right about Christmas time, if you'll recall. As we got moving forward, looking at the development, and we found that that was a site that maybe didn't work best for Russ, and so Russ and I had a conversation, we felt it was best, we simply just undid the transaction, we buy it back from Russ, and we continue to help him look to find another locations maybe more suitable to him. So, that's what you have before you. Purchase price in the contract, I think, is $14,075.
Questions, comments? Anybody? Anyone from the public? All right, let's close that public hearing.
May I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:33 PM?
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by party, that the public hearing be closed at 7:33 PM. Your vote, please, and that is approved 7-0. Next item is Resolution Number 6029, adopting Plan Modification S to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number five.
May I move that Resolution Number 6029 be passed and adopted?
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Bilzbock, that Resolution Number 6029 be passed and adopted, and this has to do with Birchwood Estates.
That's correct. This approves the redevelopment plan, if you will, and after your approval, hopefully tonight, the next step will be go back to CRA and get finalized in documents, and so TIF's in place, and Brian's able to start moving forward with this project.
Other questions? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 6029 has been passed and adopted. Thanks for coming, Brian.
Yeah, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Resolution Number 6030, declaring the proposed redevelopment area number eight as blighted and substandard.
May I move that Resolution Number 6030 be passed and adopted?
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by party, that Resolution Number 6030 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion regarding the Excel Development Project, where the old hospital is located?
Again, I believe a portion of the study is in your packet, the entire study is available if anybody wishes to see it, but it's a standard blight and substandard study that's done. Hannah Kealan looked at a number of factors and found that they are in that area, so.
I know we're jumping way ahead, I'm jumping way ahead, but I keep getting asked, what's the timeframe on that project?
On the Excel Development Project?
The old hospital project.
Again, I believe the grant applications, they find the answer out in end of April.
Oh, that was March.
End of April.
Okay.
Assuming that they're awarded that, I would probably not look for anything to get started until June, which is my guess, the earliest. If they're not successful there, they can reapply in June, and then you'd find out in July, and then you're probably looking at, you know, September, October, before they get started.
Demo work's going to take quite a while.
That's the big question that I keep getting asked is, you know, when would the demo start, how long will the demo take? You know, and then more specifically, the ones I can't answer, you know, where the truck's going to come and go from that area, and I...
There are a lot of moving parts here, yes.
Yeah, there's a lot of balls up near that thing, the jet lens, so, and most of it I can't answer, so.
Right, the asbestos removal will probably, my guess is probably take a couple months just to do that inside the building.
Okay, any other discussion? Anyone from the public? All right, your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 6030 has been passed and adopted. Next item is Resolution Number 6031, approving redevelopment plan for redevelopment area number eight.
May I move that Resolution Number 6031 be passed and adopted?
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Bilzbock, that Resolution Number 6031 be passed and adopted? Further discussion? Anyone? Anyone from the public? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 6031 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6032, executing all necessary documents to acquire real estate from D&amp;L Investments Company.
May I move that Resolution Number 6032 be passed and adopted?
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution Number 6030 be passed, 6032 be passed and adopted? Any further discussion from anyone? Timeline as far as removal of the cars?
Again, we're probably looking fall.
October, November?
Yeah, somewhere in that ballpark, is once we get this purchase completed, I believe closing is due here fairly soon, it's a quick turnaround, then we'll begin working with the operator down there to get everything cleaned up and close shop and get those things taken care of.
Any further discussion from the council, public? Gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved, six in favor and one abstention. Mr. Catlin abstains. Resolution Number 6032 has been passed and adopted. Next item is Resolution Number 6033, executing all necessary documents to acquire real estate from Russell G. and Rebecca A. Barron's.
May I move that Resolution Number 6033 be passed and adopted?
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by party, that Resolution Number 6033 be passed and adopted? Again, this is the industrial park lot. Any further discussion? And your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Resolution Number 6033 has been passed and adopted. Next item is Resolution Number 6034, executing the memorandum of understanding between the city of Beatrice and Board of Public Works in the amount of $250,000 for an environmental cleanup at First and Market Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, and to execute all necessary documents.
May I move that Resolution Number 6034 be passed and adopted?
Moved by Catlin, seconded by, seconded by Bilzbock. Resolution Number 6034 be passed and adopted? Discussion?
As it states in your packet there, this is a loan up to $250,000. If the city decides that it needs it for the gas plant cleanup, it cannot be used for any other expenditures that the city may have, it has to only be used for the gas plant cleanup. You'll see it's 1.75% interest. When we went to the Board of Public Works, lending had went out and checked what CDs were going for, five-year CDs, I think they were 1.4 to 1.7 is kind of what we saw out there as interest rates. Has to be, anything that is borrowed has to be repaid within five years, and so that kind of sets out your repayment schedule, one-fifth of it repaid each year as you move forward. That's essentially what we're looking at, more or less just a paper trail, if you will, to make sure that the city does in fact repay this as we move forward.
And the payment will come back out of the general fund or taxes?
Correct, it'll be a, just like we're paying for the rest of the gas plant cleanup, it'll be a budget item you'll see in there every year as you move forward, for any money that may or may not be used as part of this project.
Well, I don't know why nobody wanted to second this, but I do, I have a problem. I don't have a problem with borrowing the money. I mean, we've done that in the past, and there's been no problem. I have a problem with 1.75% interest. I don't think we should be charging interest on that money. It's our money, it's taxpayers' money, I don't think they should need to have to pay interest on their own money, but that's just mine, so I'm not going to vote for it.
Yes, Rich, I don't disagree totally with you, but I still like to see our own autonomy with the specific departments and their specific funds, and the fact that the electrical department could go out and put this in a five-year CD at 1.40 to 1.75% to enhance their fund on funds that, on funds, excess funds that they had, earn some interest and utilize it for further operations.
But aren't we paying more interest than 1.4 or 1.7? We're paying 1.75, so we're paying more interest than what they could get it on a CD.
I think you'd also, the argument I would look at then is that interest rates are increasing as we move forward. You're locking in for five years. It might be 0.05 above what the market is at this point, it's minimal, I mean, you're talking a couple dollars.
Interest rate went up another 25 basis points just on Friday, so, or just this past week. Phil?
I agree with Rich on this. I affirm we can borrow from the electric department. What does the electric department have, five million?
Got roughly $5 million.
And they need two point, what do they want to keep?
Probably want to keep somewhere about three and a half to four.
So, they're still, they have plenty of access there. I'm just in the feeling that, you know, yeah, they could enhance their money, but I don't think we need to pay interest to borrow our own money. It'd be like going to the bank and I taking out my CD, and then I'm paying the bank 1.5% because I took my own money out. I mean, I think we should just go ahead, borrow the money for now at zero interest, and I would make that as a motion that we borrow the money at 0% interest for five years.
Is there a second to Phil's motion?
Second.
Moved by Cook, seconded by Fairbanks, that we amend the current motion, well...
Yeah, it would be a motion to amend the agreement to read 0% interest.
To read 0% instead of 1.75%. Ted?
So, this is where I'm at with it. We may not need the money at all.
Correct.
We hope we don't need it.
So, yeah, we may not need the money at all. We actually have enough money in the city cash reserves to pay the 200, I mean, it's $250,000, correct? And we have enough in our cash reserves to pay that, all it draws it down to below where staff wants to keep it. But, like I said before, when we discussed this, the meeting prior, I'm in the camp that if we need it and the electric department has it, we just take it. But, you guys aren't in that camp, and so I am in the Phil camp and the Rich camp, that if we have to take money from the electric department, because it's all public funds, it isn't, you know, it's all, it's not, I understand that it's not tax revenue, but it is city revenue, and if we do have to utilize that, one, I would take it out of the general fund first, and then if we, that's depleted, then I would go to the electric department, but I would take it from the electric department at zero interest, so, because it's our money. If I'm a guy and I own five companies, and one of them needs a short-term loan, I certainly wouldn't be charging myself interest, and so that's where I'm at with it. So, that's why I second Phil's motion, and that's why I'm going to vote.
So, we have a motion on the floor to amend the current motion. I don't know if I'm saying this right or not, but I'm going to struggle through it. Any further discussion? Bob?
So, if we do say 0%, and Board of Public Works says no.
Say that again.
And the Board of Public Works says, no, I don't like those terms, so, and we do need the money, does that mean we go out in the open market and pay 3.5% or 4%?
Or more?
I just, I mean, is that the next logical step?
The first step you're going to look at is whether or not, how big is the ask? If it's something your general fund can handle, you may look there. If not, yes, you're going to go to the open market and look to borrow at those rates.
Okay. There's a lot of ifs in that, Bob.
All right, so let's vote on the amendment to do a 60-month loan at 0%. Your vote, please. And that passes with Councilman Morgan and Catlin voting against. So, do we vote on the original motion, then?
Well, now what you have is you have the original motion has been amended, so the resolution's been amended to read 0% interest for five years. All the rest of the terms remain the same, and now we have to vote on that.
Okay. So, let's vote on the original motion to go ahead and borrow the 250,000 from the Board of Public Works, the electrical department, for a five-year term.
At 0%.
At 0%. And your vote, please, and that is approved 7-0. So, Resolution Number 6034 has been passed and approved. Next item is Resolution Number 6035, executing a waiver of option to purchase and any other necessary documents for the benefit of the Los Braces Land Development, Inc.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 6035 be passed and adopted?
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that Resolution Number 6035 be passed and adopted? Tobias?
In 2004, the city sold Los Braces Land Development five lots in the industrial park. For those who are familiar with the industrial park, these are the lots to the east of where Timmons at today. Some of them are north of Industrial Row, some of them are south of Industrial Row. But Los Braces bought those five lots. We had an agreement in 2004 that Los Braces was supposed to build a structure on one of the lots within two years, and develop all the lots within, I believe, five years or seven years. Then, in 2006, we gave him an extension for two more years to get those things done. In our original purchase agreement, there was a reversionary clause that said if he didn't meet those requirements, the city could repurchase his properties for the amount that he paid us plus taxes that he paid, so, real estate taxes on that time period. Obviously, time has passed, the time for him to develop those lots has ended, those lots have not been developed, there, at one point was a structure on them, there is currently not one out there, and he has now found a buyer for those lots. And so, in order to close on those and sell those to somebody else who is looking to develop those lots, he needs the city to waive that reversionary clause that was in the 2004 agreement. So, what you have before you tonight is a resolution for the city council to waive that reversionary clause and allow the sale to move forward with the new developer.
Bill?
Would we be better to not extend this and buy the lots back so we have some control over the lots? And we could sell it to them? I'm just thinking, we don't know what he could be selling it to.
We do know who he's selling it to. We do know what they're going to do.
Okay.
Could you act on the reversionary clause? You could.
We don't.
If you'd like to go into exact session, we could talk about it, and we have that right to do that. Mr. Party's ready to vote no already. We could do that, but in order for the project to move forward, he needs that reversionary clause lifted. Could you act on your version of the clause? You do have the right to do that. It's going to probably take you some time in order to get that done, my guess is at least a year. It's going to take you some money to hire counsel to get that done, because you're talking some more detailed work there. How much could you actually make on that process? It's debatable. It's not hundreds of thousands of dollars, it might be tens of thousands at best, that's all an unknown. There's a lot of ifs in there.
I think the proposal that's out there is that four of the lots are being sold, being spoken for, and something is actually going to occur out there. So, I think we'd be, in my opinion, remiss by not moving this forward and not creating some time delays.
I've got a question, but David had his hand up.
Dave?
Just a quick question, and they do not go into detail, but does this all fall under the parameters of what we would allow in the industrial park and that sort of thing?
Yes.
So there's really no problem with anything that way?
No.
Okay, that's, that's all I had, just.
Tobias, is this, is this the same, I had the same question as Phil had, and so I'm glad he closed. Is this the same guy that when, so, in my memory, maybe it doesn't serve me well, is this the same guy that brought the prefabricated shed, set it down there and said, I built something?
Yes. Same guy as, and the same guy who currently owns Los Braces? Yes.
Tobias?
I, well, are, so, are we, are we going to, if we go ahead with this agreement, are we done with him?
Yes, because the only other transaction you had with him was some CDBG loans, those were paid off when the old Husker Barn building, the FD Keys building, had its fire. Through this insurance proceeds there, those loans were all paid off, and so I believe this would be the last string, if you will, that's out there, it would be tied up and taken care of, and there would be no more dealings with Los Braces or its owners or anybody else.
Okay, so, that being said, not a huge fan of executive sessions, probably wouldn't have voted against it, Dwight, but before this got brought to us, I would have, I would have been a lot more comfortable, I'm not gonna vote against it, I would have been a lot more comfortable having some, having a lot more information about it before tonight's vote, but I'm not gonna vote against it because I want to be done with this, I want to be done dealing with this gentleman.
Understandable, we found out about this less than a week ago.
Okay.
So, it fell on our desk as well.
Maybe one, yeah, and I get that, but one phone call or one email individually to each of us one at a time to let us know, so, I'm just saying.
Okay.
That's where I'm at.
Gary, why don't you come on up? Gary had his hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary Barnard, 1400 Garfield, Beatrice. I think I can throw this up for you.
Okay.
I represent the guy that wants to buy it. It's a 1031 exchange, the money's in the bank, we're waiting on an offer, and we, and the title search showed that this was against the deed, and that's why this is here tonight and why I'm asking on behalf of my client that you approve this. The plans are that we're going to put some kind of building up there, I've talked with Tobias and your city attorney, I met with Mr. Zolkowski, I think I pronounced it right, and we're gonna try to work with everybody involved and, and put some buildings up out there. So if you're, it's not with Steve Myers, who you're talking about, had, had the property. And I will tell you that, and I'm not afraid to reveal this, I, I have the full confidence of the guy I represent. We paid more for this than any land that's sold out there, I do believe, per square foot. So I don't know why the city would want to pay that for it, and we're ready to move ahead and get some kind of project going to help the industrial park, so, does that help?
I was gonna vote for it before, Gary.
I know.
Thank you.
But I, I just think there were some questions, and I think, normally I'd have sat back there and walked out when you got done, but I think it, you deserve to know what we're doing out there with some of the things that's, that's happened with some of that, and so that's why I decided to come up, but.
Money's in the bank, ready to go.
Yeah, we can't close it until this is lifted.
That was my question, this guy with the prefab and stuff, I don't trust, and the waiver being waived, you know, but if money's in the bank, Gary says it's there, I've got my.
We can, we can close the transaction as soon as-
Once this is lifted.
Okay.
Quick, like, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
Any questions? Okay, Gary, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, if you don't have any other questions, your vote please. And that is approved seven zero. Resolution Number 6035 has been passed and adopted. We have no ordinances tonight. Next item is Item Six, the public forum, purpose of the public forum, is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anything for the public forum, gentlemen? All right, go right into discussion and reports. Legislative update?
You know, if you've been following the legislature, they finally agreed on filibuster rules, and so they're ready to start moving forward now that they're halfway through the session. The biggest one that's probably sitting out there is LB 389. LB 389, known as the Small Wireless Facilities Act. Those pushing for it are selling it as a way to bring 5G to Nebraska. However, municipalities are strongly opposed to this bill. It has not yet gone on committee, but it's been named as a speaker priority bill, and it's a little bit odd there. But essentially what this would allow is communication service providers, and that's a defined term, to place their poles and wireless facilities anywhere in our right-of-way. And so we don't have much say in where they go or how they come up. They have to come in and get a permit, it very limits us on what we can deny their permit on, but once they get a permit, it's good for at least 10 years, and then it automatically renews for at least three, five-year periods. So they can have a permit that's good for 25 years. So they may come out and get a permit in the middle of some area, and we redevelop and change, and our city moves forward and does something different in the next 20 years, we still have to allow them to put that pole back in the middle of wherever they initially had their permit. We cannot require a payment for them being in our right-of-way, they can attach to our current poles that are out there without much say from us, and they're permitted to use, to put poles up outside the right-of-way anywhere except in residential neighborhoods. And so where this came up last year was in Bellevue. Bellevue started getting a number of permit applications coming in to put these poles up, these were rather large poles that people wanted to put up in places outside residential areas. One was in their downtown area, they wanted, you know, a hundred-foot pole that was gonna basically go from the back of curb to the sidewalk, it was gonna be that big and diameter, it would take up that area. With this law, Bellevue would not have been able to say no, it would have gone up, there's nothing they could have done to stop it. I know another one that Bellevue got an application for, was to put it outside of a church in a nice residential area, and again, it was not something they wanted in that location. I don't know about the mayor, but I've started getting a number of emails, they're all the same.
One right after the other, different people, but one right after the other.
At first, they were coming from people in Colorado where they tried to get this implemented. Last year, it was unsuccessful. Now they're at least have gotten local names to people that agree to use their names on these emails. I read to say, before I left the office, that the state of Ohio, many municipalities in Ohio are suing the state because they passed this bill last year, and they're unhappy with the way it's working. So if anybody talks to you or asks you, you know, where's the city at on this one, we'd certainly like the city to take a position, and we're opposed to this bill as it moves forward. The league is strongly opposed to it, I've not found a city who's in favor of it yet, but for some reason, it's been named a speaker priority bill and will get debated on the floor at some point.
It's just somebody in the legislature's making money on it.
Not just money.
Yeah, I got you.
So do we want to go on record as in opposition of this?
You certainly can, I don't think you have to, I think it's just one of those, just note, as it comes up, we will be very active getting ahold of Senator Baker and others opposing in this bill and letting them know what our feelings are as we move forward and what our concerns are with this bill. Other than that, a lot of the other bills you saw listed in there, if you have a question by any particular, but there hasn't been a lot of movement on a lot of the bills that we're watching, which is, I guess, good and bad. For the most part, it looks like TIF will probably get out of this legislative session without huge changes to it. There might be a few changes on the edges, but nothing big or substantial is what it's kind of looking like, so.
Good. All right, anything else? That then takes us to the monthly report, city administrator's monthly report.
Couple of highlights out there, six industrial row, we had a pre-con, pre-construction meeting today, we are set to begin that project April 17th, which is a Monday morning.
Oh, boy.
When that starts, they have until June 2nd to get it completed.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Let's see, I thought it was September 2nd.
June 2nd.
Oh.
So it's only 45 days to get in and out and be done.
I've been telling people, I've been telling people the wrong date, there's gonna be a lot happening.
We want to get that done before we get, go to Second Street.
Yeah. Okay.
The, the detour route, for anybody coming out of the north, will be to send them on Hickory Road out to Southwest 45th Street, not Southwest 32nd, because it has a bridge on it that's not designed to handle the weight, out to Southwest 45th, come back down, go on Railroad Road, Blue Ridge Road, Hoyt Road, on whatever names it has, come back into town, take Ashland into the industrial park, will be that route coming in.
There're gonna be some signage on that road where the bridge is to let people know that?
Yes, we had that meeting today, there'll be signage clear out north, we're gonna put our message board probably half mile to a mile outside of town so people start seeing it, but there'll be a sign at Southwest 32nd saying, road closed, local traffic only, detour route, and keep pushing people further to the west. Can't say that somebody won't try it, but not many people will try it before the bridge gives out, so.
Try it more than once.
It'll stop pretty quickly.
So, so how will you keep them from just going to downtown, following their GPS, going to Sixth and Court, and then coming back up?
There's nothing you can do to stop those.
Taking Second Street back up?
It's gonna happen, local traffic will find their way to get through there, you know, I'm sure local traffic will come down and as soon as they hit the mall, just disperse through the parking lot and get around it that way. There's only so much you can do with some of those.
Yep.
Bruce and the folks will be there writing tickets left and right, and school, the school will get a boom.
The, down at the WPC plant, as you know, we're in, we're installing the bar screen, we've got those, what we're gonna do on that project is the city's gonna buy the bar screen, and then we're gonna hire a contractor to put it in, and so you'll see that purchase coming through here sometime soon.
That's the one where the roof comes off?
Yes, the roof will come off that building as we install that, but that way we can kind of, A, speed the project up, and B, we don't pay the overhead on for the contractor buying it, we just buy it directly and take care of it that way. The piggyback, that project is moving forward, I talked to the engineers last week, they're getting very close on the design paperwork, getting that completed. DEQ had a few comments back on the permit modification, nothing substantial, they look to get those cleared up this week and get that taken care of, so then we can go out to bid and get the piggyback built here very soon. And then the gas plant, if you've noticed, we started cleaning up some dirt, if you have been out and around, you've seen that. It's going, well, I think today we found tires in the hole as well as the, the dirt, so resolving those issues as we move forward. The other thing that has been very fluid with that project has been, the railroad has been very firm in simply not talking, and so somehow over the weekend, they had a change of heart, and so we're meeting down there tomorrow to talk with the railroad about cleaning up their side of the tracks, and so what originally looked like it might be a two-year project, may now very well be a one-year project, we'll know much more after tomorrow's meeting, but, so that has been up in the air, that came up in the air this weekend as I talked to our attorneys. Additionally, with our agreement that we have with the EPA on those old costs incurred, we had an agreement, they were gonna reduce the purchase, reduce the price a little bit. Well, the EPA has a few problems right now, if you notice, their budget got a little slasher, it's been threatened to be slashed, and so they're having a hard time getting that agreement into the federal register, without going to the federal register, it's not officially law, and so they're kind of wavering, they're not sure what's happening there. Without the EPA oversight, there's only so far the DEQ can push, and so it's, there's some uncertainty at this point on that project as we move forward and continue to dig up dirt and get the problem resolved and hopefully done.
Maybe they'll come back and say it's ridiculous just to move it two miles south and bury it again.
Maybe they'll say you, it's on your ground, you're responsible for it, because we're moving everything back to the states and the municipalities.
Any questions of Tobias?
And you, you own it.
Okay, thanks for the update. All right, our next city council meeting is gonna be on April 3rd, there will be a work session at the end of this month on March 27th, and at this time, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mayor, I move that Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 8:04 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss contract negotiations.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that we go into executive session at 8:04 PM. Your vote please, and that is approved. Six in favor with party voting against.